Calling the May 23rd, 2013 Daytona Beach Planning Board Meeting to order. Madam Secretary, we have roll call.
Certainly. Mr. Hurt. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. McGinnis.
Here.
Mr. Bohan. Ms. Remark.
Here.
Ms. Washington here. Mr. Hoitzma.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Benjamin. Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Bahu.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have call.
Thank you. Next item of business is the approval of minutes. Let's take them separately. March 28th, 2013 minutes. Any corrections? I know I called in just some grammatical changes. Any others? Take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. April 25th, 2013 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm assuming no one's against approving minutes. Okay. Let's see. Okay, item number one then, if you could take over.
Certainly. Item number four, rezoning to residential professional Michigan Avenue, DEV 2013-051, quasi judicial hearing.
And before, just before we start with staff, anyone wishing to speak to any item? We have some green sheets, any member of the public, to fill out, just your name and address, for, against, in between. And there will be a time during each item that the public speaks as well. Normally, for those of you who might be new, we do staff, applicant, and then go into public. So on this item, we'll start with staff.
Good evening. Jason Jeffries with the redevelopment office. This request before you is a rezoning from BP, Business Professional, to RP on Michigan Avenue. This is a residential street in the downtown redevelopment area. The particular lots were developed as residential lots, and recently there was a fire that damaged the property beyond 65 percent. One of the lots, which is zone BP, which doesn't allow single-family residential, so it would be a non-conforming, under the current zoning, they couldn't rebuild a single-family, and the individuals that own the property would like to rebuild a single-family residential. And what we have proposed is to rezone both these properties that are contiguous to RP zoning, which basically complies with the underlying future designated land use, which is level two residential. So in your packet, you have maps that show where the proposed zoning is on Michigan Avenue. The zoning, again, these properties are Michigan Avenue, near Ridgewood Avenue. Currently, they're BP. It'd be change to the RP zoning, and the properties are, the future land use designation is level two. And staff recommends approval of the rezoning, has gone to the downtown redevelopment board. They also recommend approval too.
Any questions to staff?
Jason, just for the record, what are the dimensions on those properties?
I believe they're 50 foot wide, both of them.
Okay. So right now, they're non-conforming because of use?
Use.
But even when we go to RP, they're going to be non-conforming lots, but permitted, you're permitted to have a single-family house.
You're permitted to have a s-
They're not conforming RP lot.
But you're permitted to have a single, yeah, you're permitted to have a use. They might still have to go through a variance process with the Board of Adjustments.
Yeah, but it's a permitted use, going through the usual-
Right.
-LDC process, but the lot is still a non-conforming.
I don't think it's non-conforming lot size, but it might have some non-conforming dimensional standards.
I thought 60 feet was the, in RP.
Yeah, I thought that was.
It's in the staff report.
It's in the staff report, Daytona. Yeah, 60 feet.
Okay. Yeah, so it'd be, the lot width would be-
So it's still a non-conforming lot?
Other questions?
Just a little unusual to hear a question, something where we've got a residence moving to a business area.
I know.
Reversal of what we normally have, so.
Any comments would the applicant like to address? You don't have to. Is the applicant here? Are you doing this for them or?
Well, the redevelopment office, we're the applicant.
Okay. All right, so the property owners are not?
Right.
Okay.
They might, they're aware of this meeting, but I'm not sure they show it.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Any members of the public speak for or against? We don't have any green sheets. Okay, board, comments, motion, whatever.
I'll make a motion that we approve Development Tool 13-051, based on the recommendations of staff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like fine, okay. Next.
Item number five, rezoning, planned commercial development, racetrack, Ridgewood and Bevel, DEV 2013-030, quasi judicial hearing.
Thank you. May we hear from staff?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Dennis Morozak, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The next item tonight is a request by Michael Hale with, Kimley, excuse me, with Ted's, yes. On behalf of Fifth Third Bank, to rezone 1.65 acres of land generally located at the northwest corner of Bevel Road and South Ridgewood Avenue, from T2 tourist office restaurant, T4 tourist office retail, and R3 multifamily, to PCD planned commercial development, to construct a 5,928 square foot gas station and convenience store. I've got a general map location of the subject property. You can get that map up there. The property's located at the, again, at the corner of Ridgewood and Bevel, at the southern end of the city limits there on Bevel. I have an aerial for you also. The retail, land use of the property, that's the future land use designation, and again, the current zoning is T2, T4, and R3, and again, with a proposed zoning of planned commercial development. Got a couple of photos. These are some recent photos taken from the site. The top one shows a picture from Ridgewood facing west. The bottom picture shows a picture from Bevel facing north. Wanted to try to give you a layout of how this site would look on this vacant property. I've overlaid the proposed site plan to give you some idea of the scale of the development to help get your bearings straight. Over there on the right-hand side, the yellow flashing, that would be Ridgewood, running north and south, and then along the bottom of the screen there, you see Bevel running The green there, that's the main building, approximately 6,000 square feet, and that's the canopy for the gas pumps. As for the racetrack, again, it is 1.65 acres of vacant undeveloped property. The building will be 5,928 square feet and have 20 gas pumps. Staff had reported in the staff report that the proposed uses would be gas station and convenience store, but our land development code does limit convenience stores to 5,000 square feet, so the actual use of the, of the site will be retail sales and vehicular service light. That will accommodate the sales portion and the gas station portion. As for parking, the site requires 27 spaces. They have provided 39 spaces. Signage plan has been provided, includes two 10-foot monument signs. One of the monument signs has shown, or did not provide a traffic triangle showing safety for vehicles approaching the sign, so that's something that's going to have to be rectified during the final site plan, and it actually is one of the conditions of approval that I will go over later on. As far as the architecture, this has been reviewed by the city staff for meeting architectural requirements of the land development code. It does meet or exceed all the LDC standards, with the exception of the rare elevation, which does not fully meet the required three-foot offsets every 30 feet of the building. That's the center portion, that would be the rear elevation, and the applicant is asking for a, requesting a waiver from the land development code for this requirement. Other waivers requested, again, there's the three-foot offset. Building setbacks, building setbacks are required to have a 25-foot setback in PCD's districts. This applicant is requesting a 15.7 feet setback, which is a reduction in a waiver request. They're also requesting some landscaping waivers, including tree preservation. This is a tree preservation for overall, where 29 trees would be required overall to be preserved or included onto the site. And then for specimen trees, there is a requirement for specimen trees, existing specimen trees to be preserved. Seven are required and zero are being preserved. The overall landscaped area, there is a requirement for 25 percent of the area to be a preserved landscaped area. The applicant has provided 17 percent. And landscape islands, these are the vehicular landscape islands. One of the landscape islands is less than 140 square feet that the land development code requires. And finally, building perimeter, building perimeter landscaping is required for five feet around the building. In this case, the applicant has not provided any landscaping, is asking for a waiver from the land development code. The applicant did provide a waiver and benefit letter, and that's found in your staff reports in Attachment B. The, one of the concerns that staff had with this particular project was some of the ingress and egress points. We did send the traffic plan, traffic impact analysis, to the city's traffic consultant for review, and they've done their analysis, and they've come back with a recommendation. Primarily, the recommendation came back pretty solid with a couple of suggestions. There was one concern, and I've got the, well, one major concern, I should say, and I've got it up there on the screen for you. If you take a look, you see the two red arrows. Those are the proposed ingress egress points that are on the racetrack property, the closest proximity to Ridgewood. These are going into and out of Bevel. Just to the, to the west of that, you see a yellow arrow, and that is an egress-only point for the racetrack. A little bit further to the west, you see the green arrows. Those are the locations of the ingress egress points for the approved site plan for the Eagles Lodge that was approved last year. As far as these driveways, the traffic reviewer did make a recommendation with three driveways within 420 feet of Ridgewood Avenue. The recommendation was to remove the egress-only opening and to move the proposed ingress egress as far west as practical. And that's something that can be determined practical as they go through their modification to the site plan. So as far as a recommendation, staff does recommend approval to rezone the 1.65 acres located at the northwest corner of Bevel Road and Ridgewood Avenue to PCD with the following conditions. Remove the egress-only point on Bevel and relocate the other proposed driveway on Bevel as far west as practical. Also, the proposed monument sign that I had mentioned, located on Bevel Road, must meet the site visibility triangle prior to a final site plan approval, and that's something that staff will, will make sure that we have before we do have that approval. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city commission for first reading on July 3rd and for second reading on July 17th. Affirmative vote of six shall be required to recommend approval to the city commission. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions by the board, staff?
How many specimen trees are on the property?
I think the count-
Microphone down.
I'm not exactly sure of the count, but I think it was somewhere around 11 or 12 specimen trees that were on the property, and the applicant can confirm that, that's the amount that we've had.
But we're not preserving any existing trees?
They're proposing no existing trees be preserved. Correct.
You're in the wrong spot, is that?
It, perhaps, the applicant can better explain it, but I would assume it just wasn't meeting with the design of the, of the layout of the building and the gas pumps.
But the replacement is only going to be seven trees, right?
No, there'll be more than seven trees replaced.
How many specimen trees?
Well, no, seven, there were seven specimen trees minimum that were required to be-
No, I see, I read the chart.
Yep.
I was just concerned about the specimen trees, that there was no way to save even But I must say, I've not carefully examined the specimen tree map.
Yeah. I think primarily, they're located up in the top, I'd say probably the northwest corner of the property is where you may see the collection of the specimen trees, and where the current building, I think, is being proposed.
Do any of the specimen trees interfere with any of the underground? Aren't they doing their stormwater underground?
Yeah, they are. All of the stormwater is going to be done underground. I haven't done an overlay of where the specimen trees are located versus where the underground is, but there are, there are a good deal of specimen trees that are a distance from where the underground storage tanks will be, but I don't have an exact number of.
Okay. Thank you. And will the applicant speak to the neighborhood meeting?
Yes, thank you. They did have a neighborhood meeting. They didn't, they haven't provided us any information. It was a little bit later on for us to be able to send out some information in a packet. I believe they brought some information for you, and they'll be able to speak on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions by, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You want to hear from the applicant?
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Tom Sullivan with the Lowndes Law Firm, 215 North Yola Drive, on behalf of Racetrack on this request. I have some folks here with me today as well, Mike Hale, our civil engineer, and Chris Walsh, our traffic engineer, along with a few folks from Racetrack as well. The first point I'd like to make is that we're fundamentally in agreement with your staff's report and professional analysis recommending approval that Dennis just went over. I thought he did a great job presenting the project to you a minute ago. There is one aspect of the report that we do disagree with a little bit, but we'll get to that a little bit later. We do anticipate that there will be some public comment tonight, so in anticipation of that, would like to share a brief PowerPoint presentation with you to emphasize a couple of points about the project. So I'll start off briefly by going through our slides, if someone would be good enough to bring that up as I'm talking. Actually, two quick initial points before I go through the slides. Number one is the location of the project site. It's at the northwest corner, as Dennis just mentioned, northwest corner of Bevel and South Ridgewood, which is a major intersection in the city, and we think that location really does make the site ideal for a new racetrack. Number two, to give you a little additional background on the site, and I think this is noted in the report, but the property actually previously did have a gas station located on it, so there's precedent for the particular use that we're requesting at the location. The existing tourist commercial zoning category, I think there's also a multifamily designation on the property today, which would allow a variety of different uses, but we think the PCD that we're proposing really would be a significant upgrade and an excellent addition to the area. Racetrack is genuinely excited about the opportunity to grow in the Daytona business community as part of this process. Our first, just turning to the PowerPoint, our first slide just shows you an aerial of the, of the site, just to further orient you a little bit. One thing I don't, I want to make sure I don't forget, and I know there was a question a minute ago about the neighborhood meeting for the project. We did have a meeting on Tuesday. I think we sent the notice out to about 130 folks, given the radius requirements, and I think we had six in attendance. We did get some phone calls and emails prior to the meeting in support of the project from folks who received the notices. One of the things I heard at the neighborhood meeting that I wanted to point out was that there's been a history of vagrants congregating on the property, and there was a, as you can see, I think from the aerial, there are some, you know, some wooded areas that can attract individuals like that, particularly in an infill environment like this. And I just wanted to point out, one of the benefits of developing this project as a racetrack would be to eliminate that problem, because Racetrack runs a very well-cared-for, well-managed, well-maintained facility and has employees on site, that's corporately-owned, that wouldn't tolerate that sort of thing. So I think when we mentioned that to the folks who attended, that was well-received. There were some comments about, in fairness, there were some comments about access and things like that that did come up, which we'll kind of cover later, so I don't want to say that all the comments were positive, but I did want to point that out. The next slide is a little different view of the architecture than Dennis showed you. This is a rendering of Racetrack's really significantly redesigned store, which really, we think, sets it apart in a number of ways, including the outstanding architectural components that the project would feature. I can tell you Racetrack undertook a lengthy process. It took a couple of years to come up with this concept. It's a significant redesign from what they were previously doing, and they're very proud about it, and as I said, excited about bringing it to Daytona. There are a handful of these stores that actually recently opened in the Orlando area. The next slide, just steps back a little bit from the building, shows you the, both the building and the gas canopy to give you a feel for the overall project. I did include one photo just of the interior quickly to give you a feel for that aspect of the project. The new store really functions a lot like a neighborhood market, more than a typical convenience store, features a number of new product offerings. There's a frozen yogurt area, a bunch of new products. I'm going to just quickly skip past this slide, and I'm going to get back to it in a second. The slide on the screen now just addresses some positive economic benefits we think the project would bring. It's going to employ a number of folks. It's going to add to the city's tax base in terms of real property sales and gas taxes as well. The next slide, I think, is important because it just quickly summarizes that the project, requested rezoning, is consistent with the city's criteria as set forth in the land development code and as noted in your staff report. This is an infill site. We think it's ideal for this use. It's compatible with existing development in the area. As I mentioned earlier, there was a gas station previously on the property. We think the project's also consistent with a number of your policies and your comp plan, and we think the enhanced architectural features really further the compatibility and enhancement that it would bring. Again, we very much appreciate staff's recommendation for approval. We're fine with condition number two regarding the monument sign. With regard to condition number one, I'm going to flip back to the previous slide titled Transportation Summary and ask our traffic expert, Chris Walsh, just to come up for a minute to explain our view of the driveway spacing, and then I'll quickly wrap up, if that's okay. Chris?
Good evening, members of the board. Chris Walsh with Traffic Engineering Data Solutions. As far as the traffic is concerned, when we, first of all, we did a traffic impact study, as you heard. It was approved in terms of concurrency, this means the level of service of the roadways relative to the access. We've got the two driveways. The eastern driveway, the location of it was identified basically because it lines up with really the drive aisle of the site, and so, and also, the truck, I don't, site plan, but basically, the trucks will be circulating, as far as the fuel trucks will be circulating around the pumps counterclockwise. So when they're exiting the site onto 400, it takes them directly on out, so that's why that's, that location was identified, because it helps with the internal flow. When you have a driveway that does not line up with those internal drive aisles, you all of a sudden have a lot of problems with vehicles flowing through internally, which can then get back up onto 400 in this case. As far as the western driveway, that location was identified because it really, it provides kind of an additional relief, if you will, onto 400. One of the things that sometimes can happen on gas stations is, at the main intersection, when you get internal to the site, cars backing up, they can kind of get blocked up and congested a little bit, and all of a sudden, what happens is car that may be entering off of 400, it could possibly back up, because they've got a little bit of congestion because of cars backing up, and so, that could back up onto 400. Basically, that western driveway, the mindset was that provides a little bit of relief and opportunity for patrons on the west side of the site to exit out. Additionally, there's a little bit of, there's a delivery area on the west side of the building, so there's some additional truck traffic potentially that will be exiting out that way. So again, it provides a direct access out that way, and with it angled a little bit, that helps the traffic flow out onto 400 fairly readily. Now, one thing, also, we did sit down with the Florida Department of Transportation and talked about this concept. They were very, you know, they were supportive, for the most part. We haven't submitted formally, but we sat down with the site plan. They were supportive of the location of the eastern driveway. And the western driveway, they were, they were supportive as well.
Were they-
And they were willing to consider the right out. The main thing that they wanted, the one thing they wanted to make sure is they want to see us submit it with a design, because they want to make sure that cars can't make a right-in. That's the, kind of, their focus, because someone tries to make a right-in, they, and maybe, it'll, if someone gets attracted to try and turn right-in, it may cause, you know, a slow right-in, which could then back onto 400, but they want to see the design, but they were supportive from, you know, they want to see the design from that perspective.
And were they familiar with the future probability of another right-out ingress and egress just beyond the one you're talking about?
Yes, in fact, the beginning of the meeting was, we talked about over the western property.
Thanks, Chris. I'll just make a few, pick, a few quick points in closing. Would appreciate your recommendation for approval, consistent with the staff report, except that we would prefer to have you at least consider deleting condition one based on what Chris just mentioned. We know there'll be some comments that you hear after we sit down here in a second regarding access to the property. I'll just tell you in advance, we respectfully disagree with those comments, and we strongly believe that any comments regarding a private access easement between two private property owners isn't something that should be put in the city's lap to, to deal with as part of a rezoning request. The last point I'd like to make, just to tell you, to tell you upfront, is that we would really appreciate the opportunity to move forward with the recommendation from the board tonight. I'll just, in all candor, we have a tight, we have tight contractual time, timeframes with our seller, Fifth Third Bank, that we've already got. Quite honestly, we've already gotten extension from them, and we're a little concerned that any delay could have serious repercussions for the project, because obviously Racetrack needs to be comfortable that the rezoning's been approved to move forward. So with that said, again, would appreciate your support. We're available to answer any questions. I know there's a question regarding the trees, if you'd like us to address that, I can have our civil engineer get up and do that now. The last thing I'll say is, I appreciate you listening, and I would like to reserve the opportunity to respond to any comments that might be made.
Okay. You want to?
Well, as far as, I looked at the map, and I see the building is sitting over where the trees are.
Sure. Right, right. Mike, did you want to expound on any, I know Mike Hale, our civil engineer, is a little bit more up to speed on that. If you wanted to elaborate on it at all, he certainly can.
And, don't go far, Mr. Sullivan, because I may have a question.
Sure.
Yeah.
Good evening, members of the board. It's Mike Hale with Ted's, 80 Spring Vista Drive, DeBarry. I think there's a plan in Attachment A, sheet LP 010, that shows the removal of trees, and it does a good job of overlaying the proposed elements, so you can see where the tanks are, where the canopy is, and all of the trees, which basically is constituted by all of the trees on the site. The specimens, it may be hard to see at the scale you're looking at, but the specimens have a little S designation in them. You know, it's funny that we use the word specimen, but if you go out there and look at a lot of them, I would say specimen's not the best way to describe them. One of them that happens to be out in the area that potentially could be saved is about 10-foot tall, 12-foot tall. It's the one out near the roadway, and you could see, you can see, you can see the vagrant sleeping under it from time to time. Some of the other ones in the back, you know, they're not, they're not a very good quality. And with this being the site, the first site that you come to as you go from South Daytona into Daytona, the thought was, why leave an old scraggly so-called specimen when we can put new stock in?
But you are upgrading the size of the trees that are going in for replacement.
Yep, yep.
I have a couple of questions when I look, look at this. The back corner, there are three of the specimens with the overlay that are where the building are.
Right.
But the, the back corner, which provides privacy and, is this, first off, is this going to be a 24/7 operation?
Yes, ma'am.
24 hours a day, 7 days a week?
Yep.
Okay. So the ones that are along the back corner, there are six that are specimen trees that would continue to shield that multifamily. I mean, when you looked at the overlay that was up there, it totally opens up the whole north end of that multifamily condominium complex behind there. They're all gone. And they're where you plan on putting trees back there anyway. I mean, small red maples and bald cypress.
Right.
But they actually shield it, so.
Right. There are, when you get out and walk the property, and if you can zoom in in a tight enough schedule or scale, there are some trees off of our property that will remain, and they are some of the nicer ones. There is a cedar back there, and I don't know if any of you are familiar with it, but the cedar is not a very good-looking tree.
No, I was more concerned with the oaks, because I did walk the property.
Yeah. There, I, you know, I won't tell you that they couldn't be kept. There, I won't tell you that they couldn't be kept. There is a, you know, there's going to be some fill in that wall that you've seen there. And, you know, sometimes you don't know what root systems you're dealing with. The existing trees that would be, that potentially are not in the areas of new building and new foundation, they could be impacted by cutting the root system to build a foundation for the walls. So there again, from a maintenance perspective, you know, Race Track is very, they put a lot of thought into their landscaping program. They try and standardize it. They try and design sites that are easy for them to maintain, and, you know, that's the rationale that went into the design.
And I do have, actually, just one other question on trees. You guys keep talking about this being a major intersection and a gateway and all this, and yet, all you're willing to put in are cabbage palms? When we have, and let me just finish, I'm sure you're very familiar, and I'm not talking South Daytona, Daytona Beach, right across the street from you, the Walgreens, the Medrol Palms, the city put them in, the Medians, Medrol Palms, Super 8, Little Motel right down the street from you, Pendo, Queen Palms, Coco's, and you guys want to do cabbage palms?
Well, there again, their maintenance program, landscape maintenance program, has been standardized. They've identified the sable, the state tree, as one that works well for maintenance reasons. You know, yes, what's that? Is somebody from Race Track is here, if they'd like to address it? You know, I think...
I just, I mean, this board actually, quite honestly, talks about cabbage palms a lot, and especially gateway intersection, and what this is going to look like even with your neighbors, one of your own Daytona Beach neighbors, the Walgreens.
Sure. My name, for the record, I'm Travis Henninger. I'm with Race Track Petroleum, 3225 Cumberland Boulevard, Atlanta, Georgia. To Mike's point, the sable is what we've, we did spend a lot of time standardizing our landscaping. However, I do understand the board's concern in regard to that. We would be willing to, we would be willing to work with staff as far as identifying what we could upgrade and try to standard, not standardize, but try to match some of the trees, you know, whether it be in the median and across the street, trying to give it that developed feel and, you know, that uniform feel throughout the intersection. So we would be willing to look at that.
Thank you.
Yes.
The landscape, who is your landscape architect? Is that you anyway that did this? I'm sure...
No, the gentleman that did it, his name is Corey Mills with Mills Design Group.
Okay, okay.
Travis is with Race Track Petroleum.
Okay. I just was saying, all right, thank you. Well, thank you, because yes, it's, that's huge. Okay, any applicants?
He needs to be sure and fill out a green form.
We have those. I have, yes, I have, I have Mr. Walsh, I have Mr. Hale, I have Mr. Sullivan, and I have Mr. Henninger, Travis. I have all, yes. Yep, I have them. Okay. Public. We would hear from public now. I have those, okay. Any particular order? Anyone want to speak in a certain way? Mr. Morris, I have Mr. Morris, Mr. Nicholson, Neil, looks like McGinnis.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And Mary Ann Jump, and Nikki Nichols, who wants to be first up here?
You don't want?
Okay, sure.
Board members, I'm Jim Morris. I'm here on behalf of the Paternal Order of Eagles. They own the property immediately to the west of the subject property. If the computer folks could put up the illustration of the site plan that had the yellow and the red illustrations and driveways, thank you, that's the one I was looking for. Also, if the board would consider, in your staff package, turning to Attachment A, which starts with a cover sheet, and then there's a second page, which is the site plan. So, at Attachment A, the site plan, which is essentially the same as what's on the screen, except the one that's in your package doesn't have arrows, which obscure your view a little bit from the lines, you'll see there is the angled driveway on the west side, and then a sort of a pull-up area behind the Race Track store. You also see a heavy, bold, black line, which denotes the property line, as far as I can tell, or perhaps it's the fine black line. But my point is this: the requested rezoning before you is a PCD rezoning. The ownership of the contract seller to Race Track ends with, I believe, the fine line that depicts the driveway area. Yet you're being asked, as a part of this PCD, to approve property that my clients own, subject to an easement in favor of the property owner that winds up with the site the Race Track is interested in. The significance of that is that your code requires a submission for a PCD to demonstrate unified development and control of the property. And in order to do that, they needed to have the Eagles joiner in this request for the application to meet your threshold criteria for consideration. The Eagles have not joined in their PCD request. So the things that they're depicting outside their property, regardless of any easements they may possess, have not been joined in and consented to by the record owner of the property. So I think it's improper to either, one, consider the application at all, or to consider the application as submitted, because the property owner, the record owner of the property, regardless of the easement, has not joined in, and that is what your rules are. I think passed around to you was a depiction that I've provided with yellow highlighting that shows the easement area, which is a cross-access easement area that was created when the Race Track property, which I think is still owned by Fifth Third Bank, Fifth Third owned that property, and a company called Atlantic International Investments owned the property that the Eagles own. And in those agreements, there was a cross-access between the properties. In other words, the property that the Eagles owned has a right to cross the Race Track property within the easement areas, and the Race Track owner or Fifth Third has a right to cross the Eagles' property in the easement areas, which is the yellow area on Eagles that I've shown you. And this is relevant to your zoning criteria, and I'm going to go through those in just a minute. But what's important to know is there are shared easements between those properties. There is also, in favor of Race Track, I'm writing in favor of the Eagles, signage that can be placed on the Race Track property. Now, none of this would probably matter if it was a straight rezoning. But it's not a straight rezoning. It's a PCD zoning request, and you're being asked to make numerous waivers that have been identified in the request. And there is not an entitlement to the zoning. They have to prove to you the necessity for them to receive the zoning that they are seeking. They have to start by controlling the property that they seek to rezone or address. And Daytona Beach's requirements currently, as it relates to PCDs, require effectively a nearly finished site plan as a part of the PCD request. And certainly, the site plan materials, and you've got site plan references in your staff report, are a part of your review this evening. So what you have in the PCD request is a signage plan for Race Track that takes no consideration to the obligations of property that they are proposing to purchase is subject to as it relates to signage. Cross-access is not addressed as it relates to the other property owner. And now, let's move to the specifics of the driveway that's shown in their plan. They've shown you an angled yellow arrow. You can see by the sketch that it's intended to be a one-way-only driveway. And I need to drop back for just a minute and give you a little bit of history of the Eagles' ownership of the property, some of which most of you know. When I came before you to seek approval for their conditional use request, there was a discussion of cross-access easements between the properties. The Eagles were contracting to purchase their land, but they hadn't gotten a title policy yet. They ultimately purchased the property, and they got a title policy that never referenced the cross-access easements that I'm speaking about now. And it was interesting that Mr. Sullivan said, "It's not the city's place to interfere or interpret easements," yet Race Track representatives went to the city engineer, and because of the cross-access easement, got the city engineer to cancel the Eagles' approved site plan. So at that point in time, I guess it was acceptable. But the Eagles didn't know, when they did their plan that showed the green arrows in the center of the drawing, that they were subject to an easement. Actually, through Race Track's efforts and then being made aware of the site plan, the Eagles have actually notified Race Track, they would redesign their site plan and remove the driveway that they show the green arrows for, and make their driveway consistent with the yellow easement area. But in order for that driveway to be able to be used by the Eagles, it has to enter the road at a right-angle intersection. As they stated in their report or presentation, this is a one-way driveway. Yet the Eagles have legal access to their property, so from a policy perspective, part of the dilemma for this board is, how do you minimize driveway openings on State Road 400? And I don't think any traffic engineer has argued that you shouldn't do that. Number one, I don't think you can approve the driveway they show because it isn't their property, but number two, I don't think you should approve the driveway they show because it ensures that for the Eagles to have proper access to their property, they will have to still construct another driveway in that little bit of frontage that they have that runs between there and the A-Frame House, and the ladies from the A-Frame House are here this evening. So that permitting this driveway in this configuration, I think assures that if it's permitted, there will still be another driveway within the next little bit of distance, because DOT has to permit legal access to properties that are on a roadway. And so we've made it known, and there have been differences of opinion between the Race Track property purchasers and my clients. There's no doubt about that. But we have offered to work with them in terms of the perpendicular driveway. We think probably they need additional right-of-way in order to make the radius what it should be. We've offered to provide that to them if they would work with us. But let me stick to your criteria, because that's what you're reviewing. And if you go back in your staff report to page four, it begins with site plan criteria. There's A on page three, and that doesn't really matter to the discussion that I'd like you to consider. But if you look at B, which is site plan criteria, and it matters here because this is a PCD rezoning request and a site plan is part of the PCD, the applicant needs to show you the relationship their proposed development would have to adjacent properties, the impact the development would have on the immediate neighborhood, and the compatibility of the proposed development with the comprehensive plan. The relationship proposed, number one, offsets their building very close to the property line, and we're not complaining about that. But from the standpoint of the configuration proposed for the driveway, if they even had the legal authority to propose it, it is not a compatible approach to dealing with the adjacent property owner and the legal impediments that both properties have attendant upon them. So while it may be private, it's certainly relevant in the issue of whether or not you approve what's been proposed to you this evening. The next criteria, subpart C, ingress and egress to the site, compatibility with road improvement plans, vehicular and pedestrian safety, traffic flow and control on public streets. I've already elaborated on it, I don't need to beat this thing to death. You can see that what's there doesn't work and isn't compatible with the adjacent property. The other criteria are not relevant to the discussion that I have on this particular point until you move over to page six of your staff report and subpart H, which is internal circulation and parking with reference to pedestrian and vehicular safety. The driveway, the western driveway, you have to imagine how that thing functions. For one thing, without a right-angle turn, if you are the person going that way, how much do you slow down to make sure there's not somebody on the sidewalk, there's not somebody in your lane, whatever? You don't even have a good angle of view. You've got to look back over your shoulder. So permitting a driveway, if they could, that is less than right angle, I don't think is in the best interest of traffic safety, and there's been no adequate justification that I've heard stated which would support that. Regardless of what they say about DOT, here's the thing: they're the contract purchaser of the property, and they don't have a DOT permit. And DOT is aware of the Eagles' site plan and previously entered a driveway permit for the green arrows, but they withdrew that when Ken Kruger canceled the Eagles' approved site plan after Race Track put the city on notice and said, "Hey, there's a problem Going on to page seven, other standards peculiar to the use and scale of the development proposed. You're going to look at another rezoning request for Race Track a little bit later this evening. My understanding is that the site proposed for the second is roughly twice the size of the site you're considering this evening. So as you look at what's proposed, you have to consider, how does that work in the scale of the site that's available? And do they have room? And they talked about traffic circulation and so on. If you look at the tally on parking, you'll see, I think, the staff report showed 39 spaces are provided, 29 are required. So they have adequate space to build a lot of parking, but that also can be addressed towards traffic circulation if they choose to do so, or if you choose to have them do that. Moving on, on page seven, there's now zoning amendment review criteria, and this is a zoning amendment. Is the amendment compatible with the existing development pattern? The Eagles aren't developed yet, but you all know that they're there, and they've dealt with their site plan, but their building size hasn't changed, and they own this property. They intend to develop their site as soon as they can cross the hurdles they've got to cross, which were really created by the easement area. So I would contend to you, this proposal, as shown, is not compatible, and it relates primarily to the driveway. You may have other opinions as it relates to other things in the site, but certainly, it isn't compatible as it relates to this western driveway, and it's not compatible from the standpoint of traffic management and minimizing driveways on State Road 400. Will the amendment adversely affect traffic patterns or congestion? I think that question has been addressed. From the standpoint of PD rezoning consideration, which begins at page eight, there's a number of standards mentioned. I think the one that is important is subpart three, which is the manner in which the site plan does or does not make adequate provisions for adequate control over vehicular traffic circulation. And I've spoken to it enough that you understand what my point is. So I'm not asking you to enforce a private easement agreement. I'm asking you to consider your standards for, number one, considering a rezoning request, and number two, granting that rezoning request. This is a PD zoning. An applicant may ask for waivers. You may evaluate that request and determine yes, no, and how to address it. You have the authority to do that. The city commission depends on you to do that, and as noted in the staff report, it takes six members to support it. And I ask you not to approve the driveway configuration that they have shown, and to either, several choices, continue the request because they haven't adequately joined all the property owners that are involved, delete the driveway from the request because it is not included in the boundary, or direct them to find joiner and consent with the Eagles and make it a right-angle driveway, and we'll work from there. Thank you very much for your time. I'll be glad to answer questions if you have them.
I just had one real quick question. Did you say FDOT had actually already permitted the Eagles?
FDOT had issued a permit for the driveway that showed the two arrows.
The green arrows, okay.
And that was something that I believe happened before the Eagles knew about the cross-access easement in favor of the Fifth Third property, which is what Race Track has contracted to purchase. When we met with the folks from Race Track and the Eagles board and Race Track representatives met, I had looked at the easement documents, and Race Track actually was trying to compel the Eagles to give them access all the way across their frontage where they didn't have an easement to let them get to the median break, and the Eagles weren't willing to do that because they thought that it destroyed their site. So there was definitely a parting the ways in terms of what the Eagles requested from Race Track in order to accommodate them, and in the end, it was just a dead heat. I looked at the easement document, and on the day of that meeting, I directed the, revised, and they accepted my advice, the Eagles to have their site plan revised to coincide with the easement area, which would minimize the driveways, be consistent with the easement agreement, and should be compatible with what Race Track proposes, provided it's a right-angle driveway. The easement questions about cross-access and signage, you're being asked to approve a sign plan when, you know, the Eagles have, at least from the standpoint of easement documents, the right to come to you and seek signage there, and there's no accommodation made in that respect in this agreement. They're asking you for everything there is as it relates to their property. And it should be pointed out that the easement agreement was entered between two property owners that expected to be having some developments that matched up. There was going to be a bank owned by Fifth Third on the corner. That was shown in the easement agreement that was recorded. It was unclear what Atlantic International would do, and that's changed. I think Race Track has purchased additional property to the north, which is why you see the site project as far north as it does. So there's been some change in circumstances, but the rights of the parties are there, and they need to either be addressed or reconciled in some other way.
Any other questions, Mr. Morris? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, board.
All right. Nikki Nichols?
I live at 350 Bilbo Road, the A-Frame House. And our problem is the third driveway... And our problem is the third driveway, well, they're far west driveway as they can get. As you know, our house is the only house home Bevel, and to get out of our driveway now is a lot of fun. The Eagles are going to put in their driveway that goes in and out, then you're going to have Race Track, then you're going to have Race Track, then you're going to have Race Track. We have enough traffic problems as it is. All we can see is these three driveways, there's going to be accidents, severe accidents, especially when the train comes and traffic is stopped, there's going to be more and more backup. I can understand an entrance and an exit going from Ridgewood. I can understand one coming out onto Bevel, but I don't believe we need them all the way down to my house. I mean, I really like to get out of my driveway when I want to go somewhere, and it's very difficult at this point. So I can see the more traffic, more problems, more accidents. And there is a lot of accidents already coming when they come straight across the street from our house. They come out, or if you've still got extra traffic coming from the gas station, these people cutting across to make a left on the Bevel, we have at least an accident there twice a week, and they're severe. So I can only imagine how much more it's going to be. That's my problem.
Okay. Thank you. Mary Ann Jump.
Good evening. Mary Ann Jump. I have the house on 350 Bevel, the A-Frame House, and that's my problem, the third driveway, with all the traffic that you all know on Bevel Road and all the turns and everything else, just getting in and out of the driveway with all the driveways that are going to be there. I mean, that's my only objection, really.
Okay. Any questions? Sorry. Okay, thank you, Ms. Jump. Neil McInnis?
I don't have anything else to say.
Okay. John Nicholson?
John Nicholson, 413 West Grand Prairie Avenue. There are several things about this particular property. I came initially because of the landscaping. I worried about Race Track. It has not been a normally attractive establishment. However, what they've done here is above and beyond, so I don't have a problem with the building. I don't have a problem with the size. It's the ideal location for a gas station. It has been a gas station. We're going through this now on the beach side where a gas station is going to try to get into the 21st century, and the neighbors object. We don't have an objection here of a gas station. We don't have an objection of the size. It's just what they're doing on that site. They want a cookie cutter. They want something that fits everywhere and doesn't take other things into account. The trees in the back, if you look at the pictures and whatnot, you will see that they are far enough back that they border on a roadway. Virginia Avenue is back there, all right? And that is what is the point of contention with Mr. Morris. That roadway would have normally come to Bevel, but it's now just an easement. So technically, it should have been a roadway. It should be egress, egress. What the, I believe, to avoid all the problems is put that back into a roadway and allow the Eagles and the gas station to come and go from what would have been a normal street. Third, when you put in new trees, and they're going to go from, I think, two to a three caliper, it's like going from a pencil to a broom handle, all right? It is not a large increase whatsoever. We have, near my house, on Seabreeze at Wells Fargo, about 12 years ago, they planted some oak trees and some agnolias, and they've grown six inches. They've added no extra leaves, but they've grown six inches in 12 years. So I'm asking you to up the caliper to real trees, especially if you're back end. When you put this building there and the lights and whatnot, those trees will mitigate the light coming into those condos. There is no reason to take every single tree out. If it doesn't fit in their cookie cutter, one time, one little corner, keeping the trees would be of great benefit to the neighbors. And I'm asking you to consider saving any tree that sits on the border. I'm not asking for something in the middle of the property. I'm not asking for some little dinky tree on Bevel. I'm asking for the massive trees all the way in the back that will not affect the gas station whatsoever, but will affect the neighbors tremendously. Lastly, on the sheet, the third sheet, you're talking about what they're asking to provide, what is required and what is provided. On three of those seven, they're going to zero. No specimen trees, no this, no that, no whatever. There's supposed to be 25% minimum requirement. They're asking to go down to 17. I understand we can't landscape this like we normally would, 10 foot back from the sidewalk. All that stuff would hinder the view of the gas station. I understand that. I'm glad that Tracy talked about palms. I've been saying that for 25 years. Sable palms are nice, but you can't have them everywhere. So I'm glad they're going to change a little of the variety in that. But let's do a little compromise. They can wipe out the front three-quarters, 70%, all I'm asking is that they save the 2% in the back that are the major trees that will shield that neighborhood. They can do it, and I ask you to do that. We absolutely welcome them. You know what happened with Sunoco? I think Sunoco now has 600 or 700 gas stations in Daytona Beach. We went through that with Bray and Gillespie. Bray and Gillespie bought 37 properties on the beach side, and when they went down, it hurt us badly. Nobody knows what's going to happen in the future. Nobody knew about those four hurricanes. What happens when Sunoco hits a bump in the road? If they're the only gas station in town, we're up a creek. So I welcome Race Track, but I ask them not to do a cookie cutter here to help everybody involved. Thank you.
Before the board has any deliberations, I just wanted to ask the board attorney, any comments on what came up about the easement that the board should know?
Well, one question I had for Mr. Sullivan is the easement area that we're talking about, the owner authorization being missing from that, is this just a driveway on your site plan, or what's going on back there?
Right.
Are you just utilizing the easement?
Right. Let me answer that, and if I could respond to some of the other comments that were made, I'd appreciate, before you guys deliberate, because there are some things I'd like to say. Yeah, the comment that was made regarding the need for the Eagles to be part of the PCD application, let me clarify that a little bit. We never submitted anything to the city that said we were rezoning there, anything on their property. We've only submitted an application to rezone this particular property. Their property isn't being rezoned as part of this process. They went through a process with the city last year and got their zoning, and that's really all we're trying to get as well. It's simply shown on the site plan as an off-site access point pursuant to the easement that there's been so much discussion about tonight. So it's depicted for that reason, and I think if you, also, I don't want to, let me almost leave it at that and see if you had any other questions, but I think it's important to point out, too, that the condition of approval that the staff is proposing suggests removing that as part of the staff's recommendation, which may address it from the board's perspective. I don't know. But hopefully that answers your question.
So you're not rezoning it, and you're not building on there, or, I mean, anything that would require them to?
Not to our knowledge. I mean, we're not, I can tell you definitively, we're not rezoning their property. We've submitted an application to rezone our property. The site plan shows access on, off-site access pursuant to that private access easement on their property. But that's, there's a distinction, I think, between the PCD portion for purposes of the rezoning and the site plan that shows off-site access.
But what you are proposing is that shared easement, that it would be right turn only out of your property.
Correct. Well, right turn only where it exists, and it's.
Where you're proposing it.
Correct.
Okay.
So if I could, I'd like to just, well, but he's had his, I mean, I asked specifically for an opportunity to respond at the end, so let me just.
I got that.
No problem. We appreciate, we really do appreciate everyone's time, and I'm sorry, this is kind of a long hearing for everyone tonight. I just want to go through, I made some notes listening to some of the comments that were made. Just first, with regard to the folks who live in the A-Frame House, we listened carefully to their comments tonight. We also listened to what they said at the community meeting. I do want to just say on the record, I think it's important, I don't want to get too caught up in a singular issue, but Race Track is committed to working with neighbors as the project moves forward, and it's important to Race Track to be a good neighbor and a good representative and an asset to the community. In terms of what they said about the two driveways on Bevel from their standpoint, as our traffic expert mentioned later, we're confident, based on what he said, I won't repeat it, I'm not a traffic engineer, but we're confident that the site will function well in that way. And what makes sense to me as a non-traffic engineer is that you have, if you look at the site plan, you do have traffic that potentially could back up, it'll back up more if you only have one way to get out of the site. So we thought it would function a little bit better, avoid certain conflicts backing in closer to the gas canopy. So that was our thinking in talking about that, talking about that earlier. The other thing I would say from the standpoint of the folks in the A-Frame Houses, there's a intervening driveway on the Eagles' property that's closer to that than the closest access point would be to Race Track. So I think you have to take that into account. A couple, just really quickly with regard to the waivers, because there were some comments made about that, let me just first say that each of the requests of waivers really is critical to the project moving forward. They've all been taken into account in terms of how the project lays out as we've presented it. Generally speaking, the waivers are needed because the site's a little bit smaller than what Race Track is used to dealing with. But we've, I do want to say that we did adjust. I don't want there to be a perception that the board is concerned with, that we did not adjust from what our prototype is. We've made a number of changes to what we normally would do as part of this process, and I think that we've worked with staff, a lot of them aren't reflected in this report because we've worked with staff, and there's not a need for a waiver because we're now meeting code. And I think an example of that is what came up earlier in this, in tonight's hearing in terms of changing the landscape material based upon the board's input on that being kind of a gateway site. Now, with respect to Mr. Morris's comments, I'll start by just saying we respectfully disagree with him. I think it's important to point out that any issues raised regarding the easement are in large part not appropriate for a rezoning hearing like this. It's not right, in our view, to put the city in the middle as the referee between two party, two private property owners with respect to a private easement agreement. I really, I did want to cover the point that the city attorney brought up about the fact that we did not, we're not trying to rezone the Eagles' property. I'd also point out that I didn't see a section referencing the code to the requirement that Mr. Morris was referencing on the jointer, in any case, even though I don't think that's applicable. The, bear with me for one second. I really did want to stay away, quite honestly, from talking about the easement a lot this evening as part of this hearing, but I do want to establish a few things just so you hear our point of view on this. First, last year, prior to Race Track ever coming along and trying to buy this property to develop it from Fifth Third Bank, the Eagles submitted a site plan. It seems like the board's familiar with that approval process, which the city did approve. I think it was a special exception in the site plan approval. Apparently, the Eagles were unaware of the easement document at that time. It wasn't provided to the city, and they submitted a plan, I think, that showed part of their building in the easement area. Now, let me give you a quick timeline of events in terms of Race Track and the easement. When Race Track put this property under contract from Fifth Third Bank, we got a title report, and the easement's recorded document showed up in the title work. We met with city staff for a preliminary discussion about the project, what's staff's view, what input the staff have with respect to this being a good location for the project and so forth. When we had that meeting, the staff appeared to be surprised about the existence of the easement because, again, it wasn't provided to them as part of the Eagles' approval process. We then actually got in touch with the Eagles and brought the easement to their attention. Sometime later, we met with the Eagles, which was roughly two months ago, and at that time, they asked us to purchase the easement area for an exorbitant sum of money, which I won't repeat here, when we basically said no. Then we didn't hear from them until a week ago. And at that time, there was a proposal that was made through Mr. Morris that we found not to be acceptable that requires an amendment to a recorded document that we feel like we're in compliance with. So again, we, those are the kind of tactics that are being used against us, and I just, I felt like it was incumbent upon me to point that out. As I mentioned earlier, we believe this rezoning request, this PCD request, does meet all of the city's current criteria for approval, and you don't have to take our word for it. The staff report says we meet all the criteria. And I want to say that again because Mr. Morris spent a good bit of time walking through different requirements in the report, but yet the report says that we satisfy the criteria subject to the staff's recommendation. So I think that's important to point out. Let me see, I'm almost finished here. With regard to the comments that Mr. Morris made about transportation issues and traffic, we simply don't agree with the comments that he made about the right-angle access or his characterization of the easement in that regard. But what I'd also point out is that he's not a traffic engineer, and this is a quasi judicial hearing, which means you get to base your decision on input from your professional staff, from experts in the area, and you've heard from our traffic engineer, you've got your staff report that says that we meet, again, we meet these different criteria. And I think it's a well-established fact that as much as us attorneys like to talk, our testimony is not considered competent substantial evidence. So I want, I just want to emphasize, lastly, again, I mentioned it earlier, but I just want to mention it again because I'm concerned about it, quite frankly. Any delay in moving us forward, regardless of what recommendation the board feels is appropriate, would really have a potential negative effect on this project because of contract time pressure that we have. I'm not making that up. It's a real issue for us. We're on a tight deadline. We really need to get to the commission in July for a final decision. So again, I'm just asking you to consider that in making your recommendation. The last thing I'll say is, you know, we kind of agree to disagree, obviously, with a lot of the comments that the Eagles have made, but I will tell you that I don't, there won't be a change in positions here if there was a delay in coming back to the board, and I think that's important to point out. We're just, we're not going to get there. So I just want to emphasize that. I'm not trying to be disagreeable, but there just wouldn't be a purpose behind a delay. So again, we really appreciate you listening to us, and we obviously appreciate your support to move forward to the commission on our current schedule as recommended by staff. And as I said before, we could live with the conditions that staff has proposed, and we're available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
And just a follow-up question for the city attorney. If the board was so inclined, is there any basis for a continuance?
Well, I don't believe they need owner authorization to rezone. The one hesitation I have is that it looks like the site plan, because that's also part of this, it's not just rezoning, but there is a site plan review. Are there improvements on their property as part of that site plan? And that would be my one hesitation. On the other hand, depending on what the board does, if you weren't going to allow that access point, then it's kind of out of play. So kind of probably need the board to talk and figure out where your thoughts are.
Are there improvements on their property?
There is a driveway that's shown on their property, yes. It's off-site, it's shown on the site plan, but I think what the city attorney's pointing out, which I want to emphasize, is condition of approval, number one, that staff's proposing, which reads, remove the egress-only point on Bevel and relocate the other proposed driveway on Bevel as far west as practical, then that goes away. That's the access point that there's been so much discussion about.
Okay.
So I think it becomes a moot point if you follow the staff recommendation, if that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm not sure I understood that. Which driveway would be removed?
Sure. It's, if, I think that sketch that we had up there, I can see it on the screen there, the yellow one. Just to be clear, you know, the red and the yellow points are what we're proposing to you. The green is what the Eagles already, I think, had approved. So the report is talking about the egress-only point on Bevel that we're proposing. So what it's talking about, and I think staff can back me up on this in terms of the accuracy, is that the yellow would go away, and that's, you can see the property line is really at the kind of the corner of that arrow. So.
So if that went away, that would take care of your improvements on their property.
Correct. Yes, it would. Does that make sense? That's where the line is, right there.
Yeah, except I just interpreted differently. I thought they would be closing the red lines and making as far west as possible, which would be where the yellow line is, but you'd have both an egress and.
Right. What it's, I think what the intent is, though, is that, you know, in a simple sense, the yellow goes away. That's the first part of the condition. And the second part is that the red would be located. And the second part is that the red would be located as far west as practical, but not in that area. We wouldn't want it in that area.
Oh, you wouldn't put it in that same location?
No, because we need it closer to the building.
So it'd be further west?
Correct, correct.
How much further west?
We haven't, you know, honestly, we have to, we appreciate the language that staff has in your own practical, because we need to take a look at it more closely. But we could live with that condition, it does address the point about those improvements, if that's an issue that the board's concerned about. The condition addresses it. I mean, I suppose theoretically, to be even more clear about it, the condition could end and say, "Remove egress-only point on Bevel and relocate the other proposed driveway on Bevel on the project site as far west as practical," or something. Like, you'd add some language just to further illustrate that it would not be in the location of the yellow, that the yellow point is now on that.
So part of the driveway, just so we're very clear, part of the driveway is the easement area we're talking about, but part of it is actually their land?
Correct, the yellow.
All of the yellow is their land.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure everybody is understanding here. Can we go to just the site plan without the arrows for just a minute? That's further down in Attachment A.
Okay.
All right. You see this area that's been striped out?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Anything striped is entirely off the property that RaceTrack would be purchasing, okay? The striped area defines the easement area that was described in the easement, the recorded easement, okay? So, we're, you know, we're asking to rezone only that which RaceTrack is purchasing, but we're proposing the driveway because the easement says you can put a driveway there, okay? Now, in terms of the outbound, there was no deliberate move. We went and met with the DOT, and the DOT said, "We're worried about vehicles turning inbound." Okay? So are there improvements? Yes, there's some concrete and a stop bar and a stop sign that keeps people from running over pedestrians, but we're not asking to rezone anything but that which RaceTrack is purchasing.
And the crosshatch areas where the yellow line is on the other?
So you're only asking to rezone your property, but you're asking to do work on their property?
I think, actually, our perception is...
No, not the easement, no, this isn't in the easement part, they're actually, is it all in the easement?
The access road is in the easement area.
No, the access road is, but everything that's being proposed about the driveway is in the easement? Everything?
Yes.
The right turn only, the far right.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, there's a connection that happens right where the two properties join each other.
Okay. Is that clear, that up for you, Mr. Morris?
Yeah, I'm familiar with that corner, I travel a lot.
And one other...
I don't like where the red lines are, it's too close to the intersection area. Well, I'm not a traffic engineer, and they said it was...
Well, and obviously, this is a, there's some dynamics to it. I've heard discussion about three access points. Personally, yeah, I mean, we heard Jim say that they're considering going down to one access point and relocating it. So, I don't ever see a need to concern ourselves with three access points and 420 feet. I think it's got a tendency to shift east, which is probably better for the A-frame house. You know, it's, I don't know that I can tell you what the final version will look like. I do think the comment about moving it far west, if they're leaning towards moving theirs to their eastern property line, then I think you don't want two driveways right on top of each other.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Barham.
Is there a driveway or ingress or egress from the Ridgewood side?
Yes, there is.
And what would that do to the traffic, seeing there's a right-hand turn going on to Bevel, to 400? Does that affect that in any way?
No, there's actually a turn line that extends past that, so it's within an existing turn line area. So, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, the traffic study's been done, which shows it operates acceptably.
Okay.
Seems to me that you could, as far as your opening, where your arrows were, your red arrows, make it wider, and you don't have to go to the corner.
If we can, can we go back to that slide with the arrows?
Because while you're going back, I do just want the board to keep in mind that our traffic engineer, who is also competent, professional, testimony is disagreeing with you, in what we have been considered. So we have two different tests...
Based on a set of circumstances, that there was potential for the third to exist.
Right.
That potential, it's approved by this board.
That, yes, it's already been approved, so...
But then it was, I mean, in fact, the letter from the engineering department said you can't build it, that site plan?
That letter I don't see as canceling their site plan. It put them on notice, hey, we've been told there's an easement, if this is true, their building was proposed to be in that easement. So that letter put them on notice that there's an issue with their existing site plan, it didn't cancel it, though.
Yeah, it doesn't cancel on its side, so just wanted to be very clear. Okay, Mr. Neil?
I wanted to point out about the, on this slide up here, the red arrows, the position of this driveway is such that a vehicle coming in from the access off Ridgewood, RaceTrack fuels their gas tanks by circling their gas pumps with their tanker trucks and offloading parked out here, so they can load the tanks, okay? So, you can imagine that a truck that comes in off of Ridgewood, comes in and circulates around the pumps in a clockwise manner, it's going to be virtually impossible for him to leave the site and continue back out to the interstate unless this access point is in the general vicinity where it's shown, right? Making another turn, and then another turn, and then another turn is the difficulty in that movement. That is the rationale behind that access point right there.
I understand that rationale, I'm simply talking about the fact that when the truck comes in to drop its cargo, it goes around and loops back on to 400? Or does it go around and loops back on to Ridgewood?
It's probably going to be heading westbound on 400, on Bevel. But be honest with you, that could change, you know, depending on the number of stores and where they're going to and from.
Correct. That would virtually eliminate the yellow one in the back if there was a way, if it was going back on to either Ridgewood or around in a loop. Big as the property is, I can see that.
Mr. Davis, did you have a...
Well, the yellow arrow's not for the fuel delivery trucks.
No, no.
The fuel delivery trucks, as I see, are going to come around, make a loop around the fuel island, park with the truck facing north on the east side of the property, unload the fuel, go around again, and go out, probably towards the freeway, I guess, so. But the question I had with the site plan that Mr. Morris gave us, you know, it shows that the Eagles' proposed building is using part of the easement for access. Actually, the easement kind of bisects the access point on Bevel. Now, we go back to, those green arrows are not in that location. You know, the access point here on Bevel is on the easement. So how did we get the green arrows down to the front door? It's like right around into the front door of their proposed building?
Mr. Davis, the green arrows were what was permitted before the Eagles knew about the easement area. And recognizing that there's an easement there, and taking an opposite tact in that the Eagles are willing to make compromises and meet the public safety requirements, at my request and direction, they replanned their site plan to coincide with the easement area that shows in the yellow. So that you would only have one driveway, pardon? So that you'd only have one driveway where the yellow arrow is, and that would access the Eagles, it would be right in, right out. The green arrows that you referred to were also right in, right out, but in the configuration of the plan as presented to you, it's a one-way driveway, and it eliminates the ability of the Eagles to access their property, so it would necessitate a second driveway, and perhaps it's where the green arrows are, they would replan their property. But when we had an impasse with RaceTrack in terms of some sort of approach to it, I directed them to use the easement area and redesign that way. If you'll allow me 30 seconds more, there's three things I want to address. Your PCD requirements require that you submit a site plan, that's what you got, and it went off the property. Your staff report says, "Take that driveway out, if you take it out, we're absolutely fine with that." But that's why I said that it's a part of it. In terms of the criteria, I referred to the criteria for your site plan approval, I don't think you should approve this site plan the way it is. And they objected, saying, "We're not rezoning this property for the driveway," but the fact is, it's part and parcel of their rezoning plan that you have to consider in your quasi-judicial capacity. Third point the chairman's raised already, your traffic engineer, who is competent, says that that driveway, as proposed, should not be permitted. In my comments to you, I said, "One solution is simply take it off." You're being asked to approve that, and believe me, they will push that home. And my final comment would be the tactics that they've been faced with. They got a response equivalent to what they were handing out, which was when they tried to push the Eagles so hard to take their frontage where they didn't have an easement, to get to the median breaks so they could have two-way traffic coming to their site. The Eagles refused to do that and set a high price to change their pattern, and that's what happened. Take the driveway out, we're good to go, or make it right angle, one or the other. By driveway out, I mean the western driveway.
Right. So, following up on that, so as this site plan that shows the building up in the front with the Eagles ingress and egress both ways, half on the easement area, you also show access to the east, to the Fifth Third property?
Yes, sir, and we're legally entitled to it.
At some point in future development, then RaceTrack will have access through there?
At a right-angle driveway.
Use that?
Yes, sir.
So is it not valid for RaceTrack to be able to develop some type of access there until the Eagles do develop there?
I don't think it's, for one thing, you've got to go through a driveway modification, and then when you look at your traffic report, forget what my opinion is, use your own experience, that's why you're here in a quasi-judicial capacity. Imagine yourself using that western driveway at an angle to merge with traffic. Do you stop and look? I don't think so. I think you grab a quick look over your shoulder and you accelerate into traffic, which, as the other testimony here tonight has shown you, can be heavy. Your common sense is all that you need to tell you whether or not that's a safe approach. I don't think it is. If they're going to build it, they can build it at a right angle. The Eagles offered to even be a signee on the permits, but what they told you is, "We're done, we're not talking, delay us if you want to, we're not changing." We're simply trying to live within the document of the easement and also do what makes sense from a planning perspective. So regardless of whether they want to balk or not, y'all are in charge, and you can say what should happen.
Thank you. Okay, board, comments, discussion?
I'm trying. Go ahead, you go first. I said microphone, please. Oh, no, it's on. But you weren't talking to them. Oh, I have to, okay.
Yes, that would help.
Yeah, I must say I'm a little frustrated with this, you know, that I'd like to have this there, because that certainly is not the most attractive area, right there, that corner is not the most attractive. And I think as somebody indicated, it does lend itself to the homeless or those type people who would go into that area. And actually, it appears to me that the building they've designed, it really has a nice design to it. I think it's attractive. I have a big problem, though, with the fact that we, over many, many years in the past, we have set up certain criteria that we have, that we would like organizations to come to us and sort of fit in the criteria. And I think we sometimes, sometimes will modify that slightly to make it work. But I am frustrated by the fact that we have one underbuilding setbacks, we have seven under landscaping, and we have eight that we have to make the exceptions for. And that bothers me, because they don't seem to want to make that exception. They could have designed within these rules, but it's not being done. And actually, I think we need to do one of two things. We either have to say we're going to follow our rules somewhat, or we're going to have to change our rules. And actually, it looks to me that if we don't think that the rules we have now are okay, then we better change them. But it seems odd, not odd to me, but it seems unfortunate to me that we have to make this many exceptions. Thank you.
Just watching, please?
Yes, I'm in agreement with Mr. Hoitsma about the exceptions. I think it's a little too much for us to give in. We want to improve with bringing businesses into the area. We want to give the community something, a contribution, but at the same time, we don't want to give up everything to bring them in. And I felt, I totally agreed with, when I looked up and I'm going, there are just too many concessions we're being asked for. I know that area, I know what the traffic is like on that corner, and I just can't imagine having that just one way into that area. I don't like the idea of them having use of the easement and not the individuals in the A-frame house. I'm just, either they go back, continue, and discuss, and come back, or I can't agree with it as it is.
Any comments, Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, I agree with my fellow board members' comments about the number of exceptions we permit, but we have permitted that number of exceptions in other PD applications. So it's not, it is a larger number, but it's not a larger number than we've seen before. I was especially concerned about the landscaping. But what concerns me more is, the site plan utilizes the easement property for the driveway and for the driveway all the way behind the building, and I just don't understand how rationally we can include anything on the easement property as part of our PD rezoning. If they weren't doing anything on the easement property, or if they came to us with the agreement of the other people that also have rights on the easement, that would be a different I glanced at the easement document, and both parties have equal rights on the easement document. But I just can't bring myself to vote on this if there's any part of this site plan that extends onto the easement. It doesn't seem to me that our PD rezoning has to extend to property that is not within the boundaries.
Mr. Morris, any comments?
No, I stated earlier, I agree with our engineer, traffic engineer, as far as closing them on and moving as far west as they reasonably can. That's a concern, yeah, the landscaping was too, but I think that probably still could be worked out, so. But I'm not inclined to answer the question, I think we need to stand for certain standards.
Okay. Just a quick follow-up on the, I don't think we've ever been asked to totally scalp a property of everything that's there. The easement, I do think, is a civil matter between them, as long as what we do doesn't impact any improvements on the easement or any rezoning, I don't see a problem with that. But, and I appreciate RaceTrack being here, I appreciate, I certainly think that it's a perfect spot for something like this, and for you guys with your, with the company that RaceTrack is. I have a major problem, we're supposed to be a tree city, we're a green city, we are doing a new code that is all about preserving tree canopy. You could easily preserve at least six specimen trees in that back corner that would shield, being a good neighbor, the multifamily condo investors who own their property back there, from a 24/7 light, sound, noise, delivery, the dumpster, which is going to be right up against the multifamily, by keeping those trees without having to put your stamp on it. I mean, you're in Daytona Beach, part of Daytona Beach is oak trees, part of Ridgewood is historic oak trees, and you have the opportunity to preserve those and be a good neighbor. And just one 25-foot tree, and you have six of them back in that corner, cools five to 10 degrees, just one area, just what you do in, it being Daytona Beach. We're about being sustainable, the net effect in terms of stormwater, and you're doing all your stormwater underground. To be the size that those oak trees are, they're anywhere from 75 to 150 years old. One large oak will take upwards of 50... One large oak will take upwards of 50 gallons of water a day. So I think your stormwater could actually benefit from keeping those. So I really do have not so much the landscaping, but even the sustainable and the green. And I do appreciate... I did just want to point out, I do appreciate your community benefits letter that you did. But I had one question. You had said 30 jobs. When you guys, Race Track, your spokesperson in Tampa, several of these were you put in, and they look to be the same size, your new 6,000-unit retail store. Your backup letter says it's employment for 30 people. Your spokesperson on the record specifically says it's 20. I just wanted to be really sure that we're clear about what we're talking about as a benefit?
Sure. If you want, I'll just address that point. It's better coming directly from Race Track on how the hiring process works.
Okay, thank you.
In regards to the employment number, it actually depends on the amount of traffic that we have at the store as far as inside sales and that sort of thing. The stores that we have that where we have really great inside sales, we are upwards of 30 people.
Okay, thank you.
As far as that goes. Some of the stores in Tampa that don't see as much, we can afford to scale it back, so to speak, as far as labor. It's really trying to find that sweet spot. So we anticipate this one to be a... You know, due to the location, we anticipate this one to have a really high inside sale count. So we expect that to be upwards of around the 30 mark as far as new jobs created.
Okay. Good, thank you. Okay, board. Remove the egress, pass it as is, ask for continuance. What do we want to do?
I say egress adjustments.
Okay.
Ask staff.
Yeah, and staff has a...
Okay.
That means removing everything on the easement property and only rezoning within the borderline of the...
It means following the staff recommendation.
Correct.
On it. And we would want to add in whoever might craft the motion, we would want to add Race Track's concession to make a change in the cabbage palms to...
Under trees.
Okay. So I need a motion?
What about your comments about leaving trees in there and the specimen trees in the back?
Well, I can't make the motion. I would hope one of you would include that.
Do we want to...
If at all feasible, that back corner.
I know I...
When we're talking about removing the egress on Bevel...
Mm-hmm. The right turn only, the far right one.
Are we talking about removing any development over the property line into the easement? Because that's what I'm talking about.
By removing that, it takes it all out.
Yes.
There is nothing developed at all?
Correct.
It takes that out.
Except the driveway, okay.
Yeah, that takes that out. Yes, and if...
Want to follow the staff recommendations?
Right.
On the staff.
Follow staff recommendations, make the change in the palm trees, and then if anyone's interested in truly being green. So I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve it. That's staff recommendations.
With any change...
With... No changes.
Okay. No changes. No changes in palm trees, no...
Oh, the cabbage palm, yes.
Okay, changes in... Okay.
Cabbage palms too.
Okay. To coincide with the other...
Coincide with the trees that are being in.
Okay, gateway... Okay, gateway trees. All right. Okay, motion, any second?
Second.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And in your motion, you're not dealing with the tree, the specimen trees in the back?
No.
No, he's just doing the gateway trees.
Okay.
Okay, why don't we do a roll call vote?
Gladly. Mr. Moore? Mr... Ms. Remar? Mr. Davis? Ms. Benjamin is absent. Mr. Neal? Mr. Bahu?
No.
Somehow I skipped my own name. No.
And you have one more?
Mr. Hoytma.
Mr. Hoytma.
Did...
A gentleman to your left.
Mr. Hoytma.
Okay.
Okay, and it loses. We have five, I think it's...
Six.
Six, two is vote against.
Six, two, no. Would you like to... It takes six... An affirmative of six.
Sure.
As I said earlier, we would like to move forward with a recommendation of some kind or another so we can just stay on track with our contract to get to the city commission in July. I don't know if there was someone else that would make another motion similar to the one that was just made, including the specimen trees.
Thank you very much. Okay.
You are agreeable with specimen trees on...
In the back.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
All right.
I make a motion, we approve the recommendation from staff, adding that the gateway... I don't want to call it shrubbery. Landscape...
Palms.
Palms.
Gateway palms will be changed.
Be changed. And that we also include maintaining the specimen palms at the back of the property.
Specimen oaks.
Specimen oaks at the back of the property.
In the back northeast corner. Good.
Second.
Okay, and we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Mr. Moore? Mr. McGinnis? Ms. Remar?
Yes.
Ms. Washington? Yes. Mr. Hoytma? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
You have your six. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item.
Next item on the agenda is other business and number one or eight under other business downtown.
We have six. We're in six. We have a second. Race Track.
We're going to do this again.
I guess you can tell I was ready to go.
I think this one might be less complicated.
Number six, rezoning. Planned commercial development with preliminary plat... Race Track LPGA DEV to 2013-034 quasi judicial hearing.
Okay, staff?
Thank you very much. Dennis Morozak, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The next item, excuse me, is a request by Mike Hale, P. on behalf of Indigo Development LLC to rezone 3.41 acres of land generally located at the southeast corner of LPGA Boulevard and Williamson Boulevard from M2 light manufacturing to PCD planned commercial development and to approve a preliminary plat in conjunction with the rezoning to construct a 5,928-square-foot gas station and convenience store. And the site... The site is located at LPGA. It's the, again, the southeast corner of LPGA and Williamson Boulevard. If I can get those maps put up, please. I also have an aerial map for you. You can trust me that they're there.
[laughter]
I've been using the Stealth mapping system, which has been faulty lately. There you go. And there you have the aerials. The future land use designation of the property is mixed use. And the current zoning of the property is M2 light manufacturing. The proposed zoning for the property is planned commercial development. I went out there, I took quite a few pictures. It's... There's not really a whole lot out there. The top picture is a... That's taken from LPGA. It's facing south. The picture on the bottom is from Williamson, and that's facing east, northeast. Here's an aerial of the proposed location, and I did the same thing I did with the other Race Track. I've superimposed the plan for this. This is approximately almost two acres larger than the Race Track over on Ridgewood, so it is spread out just a little bit more. And get your bearings again. You see the yellow flashing line? That's LPGA Boulevard. That's running east-west. And the red line, that's Williamson Boulevard. That's going to be running north and south. The location of the retail building and then the canopy for the gas station. As for Race Track, this is 3.41 acres. This is vacant and undeveloped. It is a 5,928-square-foot building with 18 gas pumps. Again, just as before, this is not considered a convenience store. The use will be classified as retail sales and vehicular service light to accommodate the gas pumps. As far as the parking, parking required is 27 spaces. The applicant has provided 42 spaces. A signage plan has been provided and is included in your packet. Traffic has reviewed this. We have had the city's traffic reviewer do a thorough review of their traffic impact analysis. There are a couple of outstanding comments. These are some technical comments that can be addressed prior to a site plan approval. The applicant, as you've heard, did have a neighborhood meeting, and they can speak a little bit more on that neighborhood meeting. I have the elevations. These are a little bit more difficult because there's some additional information on there, but it'll give you a good idea of the elevations. Very similar to what was being proposed over at the Ridgewood location. The architectural elevations have been reviewed by the city's architectural design reviewer, and they do meet all of the standards for the design standards for major city thoroughfares. I did want to provide also an artist's rendition of the proposed plan. You see up on the top, that's the actual building. And then on the bottom, you see the gas pumps with the building in the distance. As far as waiver requests, there are less waiver requests with this particular application. The applicant is requesting a building setback reduction of... From the 25-foot PCD requirement. This is a reduction that's not actually a reduction for the building setback for the retail center building. It's a reduction to 19 feet for the dumpster enclosure. Typically, we don't look at the dumpster enclosure as part of a building setback. A dumpster can encroach into a building setback. So this 19 feet is an encroachment just for the dumpster location. And what I would like to do is just to make sure that the PD agreement states that it is a 19-foot building setback for the dumpster enclosure only. So there's no ambiguity that a building could be built within 19 feet. As far as landscaping, we do have the...
Excuse me, the building would be setback.
The building is setback farther than the 25 feet, but I didn't want to have something in a PD agreement that said a 19-foot setback, and then next thing you know, they're moving their building 19 feet. So it's just for the dumpster enclosure that that encroachment would be possible. As far as landscaping, building perimeters, our code requires a five-foot strip of landscaping around the perimeter of the building. They've requested zero. And then landscape islands, there's some uniqueness with some of the proposed landscape islands. There are... I think there's one that's a kind of a smaller island that doesn't meet the minimum standard, and it's the way they have it designed within their parking lot. Should point out also, with this particular application, and it wasn't with the last one, they are requesting a preliminary plat to be approved as part of the PD rezoning. It'll be an exhibit to the PD. So the preliminary plat has been reviewed by staff and has been found to be in compliance. And this plat is included in the request for approval. As far as the recommendation, staff does recommend approval to rezone 3.41 acres of land located in southeast corner of LPGA and Williamson Boulevards from M2 light manufacturing to PCD planned commercial development and to approve a preliminary plat in conjunction with the rezoning with the following condition. All outstanding traffic comments will be resolved prior to the final site plan approval by staff. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city commission for first reading on July 3, 2013, and second reading July 17, 2013. An affirmative vote of six is required and recommended approval to the city commission. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions, Mike?
So the only reason for PD is the landscape variances and the setback variances?
And there is a requirement in this particular area that properties do get rezoned to PD when they come in. So it's a requirement based on a neighborhood policy that has to be rezoned to PD.
Okay. I thought that should be on the record.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. And just one thing... Just wanted to make sure, when you're talking about the landscaping variance around the building, it's because they're doing this hardscape look?
Yes.
I mean, it's...
Yeah.
Our landscape would be a green buffer, but the very fact that they're doing... There is landscaping, it's just not the way we envision it?
Yeah, and the way they do that is because there is a lot of pedestrian activity.
Right.
And if you do have the landscaping adjacent to the building, you do have a tendency of damaging that landscaping.
Yeah.
So it's not conducive for that type of use.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, want to hear from the applicant?
Tom Sullivan, again, for the record. I'll be very brief. We did have a community meeting. No one attended, other than us, of course, which I guess is not too surprising because most of the property around this area is owned by Consolidated Timoca, who's selling us the property. I did just want to say that we're in agreement with staff's report and analysis, including the clarification that Dennis made in the PD agreement. It's not our intent to get the building within that setback, so we'll certainly be happy to make that clarification. So with that said, we're available to answer any questions and would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Okay.
I was just curious...
Yes?
Sure.
Why with 3.41 acres and you're having at least 15 extra parking spaces, why you had to have that extra six feet?
Sure. Let me let Mike, I think he might be able to better answer that.
I heard in the last case how the site was 3.41 acres, but if you call the site plan up, it's important to note that there's a huge DOT drainage easement and a canal that encumbers a large portion of that 3.41 acres.
There it is.
Yeah, so when you get right down to it, we're not really... We're owning this much property that we're not really using. To the point of landscape, yeah, there's more than... There are well more than is required by code being put on the outside. So in terms of landscape area, you know, the city's getting a lot, a lot more than the code would require, just happens to be on the outside because of the ditches.
Where's your dumpster sitting there?
Dumpster's sitting right there. So the trucks will come in, use the dumpster, come back out, and X.
Any other questions? Okay. We have some people who had indicated they wanted to speak to this as well. Mr. Nicholson was one. Those are all Race Track.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. Tracy, I'm glad you said that we are a tree city. But this particular site, considering what's around it, considering that the Florida Hospital is right down the street, the gateway is across the street, I'm asking you to go back to what Tracy had recommended instead of sable palms, that we go to maju palms or date palms or something that's a little bit more upscale, because I can envision this area being more upscale. We can't do much with Ridgewood, basically, because it's Ridgewood. What's going to happen here, hopefully, will be much, much more valuable land. So I'm asking you to go to a much more upscale palms or trees on the property. Secondly, I understand they're minimal landscaping. When you look at these buildings, there's usually a sidewalk... When you look at these buildings, there's usually a sidewalk right next to the building. It makes sense. All right, you see this in almost all the new gas stations, because it limits the pedestrians throwing cigarette butts and stepping on the plants, maintaining them, et cetera. It comes out as a clean, sleek look, so I'm happy with what they're doing. I just ask you that when you look at the landscaping, that we upgrade it to the highest possible landscaping because of the area. Thank you.
Okay, any other members of the public that didn't sign up yet that wanted to speak to this? Okay, come forward, please. What? Yeah. And actually, after you, we'll need to have-
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Devol Patel and I live in the neighborhood and I also have a business in the neighborhood.
Could we have an address?
Yeah, it's 105 Loganberry Court.
Thank you.
I'm in the Bayberry Lakes subdivision on the opposite side of the bridge.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I just wanted to bring it to your guys' attention is, this LPGA Boulevard is like a blank slate right now. So with you guys, you know, you guys can make the decision to put more and more gas stations in here and set up a shopping center, restaurants, and that's what we need on this exit. And we already have a huge 7-Eleven right across the street on the same intersection. And we have a cell gas station on the next light. What is the need for a racetrack right across from 7-Eleven where there's, all you can see is grass and trees? This is not a major highway that can afford three gas stations right next to each other. And on my way here, I saw at least five closed gas stations. It's because we've built gas station here, 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 and there's no demand for gas stations. Demand for patrol is actually going down with all this new technology coming up. So I really don't understand why you guys are, the staff, is recommending approval of rezoning from light manufacturing to a gas station, because there's already a huge gas station there and you're going to put an even bigger gas station and more traffic, more trucks. Is that what we want on LPGA Boulevard? I mean, the reason I moved there is to avoid all these gas stations. And by you guys putting more gas stations all over the place, 24 hours, 7-Eleven is going to be 24 hours, racetrack's going to be 24 hours, the Shell Dunkin' Donuts is 24 hours. So are we inviting the bad element in there to hang out at LPGA? And you guys really, if you can think long and hard before you guys approve more gas stations where there isn't enough population to support it, I mean, it's just going to bring more traffic. There's already accidents. It's a 16-lane intersection and there's already accidents. Now you're talking about, there's already a gas station here, you're going to put a gas station right across the street on the same intersection. And these are convenience stores. People come in and out like every five minutes, every five minutes. So already you've got in and out from 7-Eleven, now you're going to have in and out from racetrack. It's already a busy road, cause more, more traffic accidents, more traffic, and it's not going to help the community at all. No value to the community. If this racetrack comes in, it's going to take business away from the 7-Eleven, from the Shell, which was already closed down two years ago. I don't know if you guys are aware or not, because of lack of business in the area. And the guy who's here, he's going to talk after me, but he brought it up, he's still making it, just making it. If this racetrack comes in, he's going to be out. If the racetrack says they're going to bring 50 jobs, they're going to take 20 jobs from here, they're going to take 10 jobs from here. What's the point of it? Then they have a closed Shell gas station abandoned on LPGA Boulevard and we got, you know, high-priced homes over there. Do they want a closed gas station or more gas stations? What's in more and more gas stations, which we do not need at all on that road? We have enough.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, and could you pick up a green sheet? Just to fill out, please, your name and address?
Craig Patel. I reside in Tampa. I am the owner of the Circle K. I sublease the Dunkin' Donuts on my property. I lease the gas station myself from the employee of APEC who's sitting right there. Like he said, the gas station was closed three years, right? And I came in and reopened it, put my hard work, my hard money in there, and subleased Dunkin' Donuts in there. Having a racetrack is just going to do the opposite of what was there. So it's going to hurt me dramatically. Dunkin' Donuts employs, how many, how many employees?
Actually, 17.
17. I have about seven, so right there, we got 20-plus employment right there. And having a racetrack, I'm guaranteeing you, I just came above water after three years and this is going to hurt me and probably close me down. So please rethink. We don't need on the gas station, like he said, we have enough as is, especially on weekends. Weekends are completely dead for us and it's going to even impact even larger. So please rethink. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Anybody else from the public that wants to address the, okay. And if you want to actually come forward, sir, if you were going to speak as well, just so you'll be ready for the next, yes?
My name's Carl Exford. We own the property on LPGA where the Circle K is and we lease it to Craig. And we reject completely, we do not need another gas station on LPGA. I mean, financially, you can't, can't survive. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
My name, my name is Razav Shari. I'm the franchisee of Dunkin' Donut. Just to complete his statement, is going to definitely hurt him and by hurting him, by, he's the guy that I'm leasing from him. We didn't lease it from, what's that, APEC. And believe it or not, opening up a Dunkin' Donut is not that cheap, just the initial franchise fee of that one right now is $60,000. So plus establishing the drive-through, which costs over, just the drive-through by itself, it costs about almost $100,000. The inside equipment is another $120,000. Renovation inside of it was another $60,000, $70,000. So I'm saying that when you're going to actually, while he's saying yes to this concept, that we do not need it at all, it is already two women there and they are surviving, they are doing well. I mean, he's not doing that well. He's just, as he said, he's just coming to the black and then by, he go out of this business, it's going to hurt us too and we have to close because we are the sublease of this gentleman. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, is that from the public? Did you want to address?
Yes, I would, thank you. Tom Sullivan, again, for the record. I guess, you know, first and foremost, I'm fairly, I'm a little bit shocked and fairly disappointed in the plainly anti-competitive comments that we just heard from the operators and owners of other businesses in the area. In my opinion, and it's just my opinion, I don't think that's the way that, number one, it's not a valid reason to evaluate connection with the rezoning application, but number two, it's just that kind of anti-competition, it's not a valid basis, it's not, frankly, it's kind of an un-American sentiment to not let people compete and do well in their own, in their own business with respect to their own property. The comment about there's no need for more gas stations, I think you have to take that with a big grain of salt, given who these individuals said that they are in the area, quite frankly. I can tell you, by the way, that simply isn't the case, that in terms of there not being a demand for an additional station, as you might imagine, racetrack's a very successful business and they wouldn't be interested in this location if they didn't, they weren't very confident in terms of there being sufficient demand for their product. The comment about some of the other stations that might be closed in the area, I learned this, I'll just share it with you in the course of representing racetrack. In 2009, the federal government required additional standards with respect to the underground storage tanks that are provided on these stations and a lot of the, frankly, kind of the mom-and-pop operators were not able to upgrade those stations and that's the reason why they went out of business. It wasn't necessarily that they weren't profitable up until that time. If you look around central Florida, you'll see a lot of that, but that's the reason why. It's not that there's a lack of demand for the use. Lastly, again, we meet your criteria for the rezoning. I think the staff report does an excellent job of walking through how we fulfill those criteria. I think that's what the board historically has been focused on in making these kind of decisions. The last thing I'll say, again, I don't want to just jump past it, I know I don't want to repeat things that I've said earlier tonight, but this is really an exceptional building. This is, there's a lot of work and a lot of effort that racetrack's gone through to really raise the bar, if you will, in the convenience industry. And frankly, I think the product will be exceptionally compatible with the area. I think it'll raise the bar in the area and I think that's a good thing for the city. So with that said, again, we'd appreciate your support and can answer questions if you have any. Thank you.
Any questions? I had just one question. Would you be willing, given the-
Yes, I know what you're going to say. But if you could fashion-
It doesn't have to be the, just work with staff-
Sure, that's-
On the, because the city put a lot of money into that-
Into LPGA, sure.
Yes, interchange.
Understood.
Thank you.
I think, Mr. Sullivan, also, you indicated this is a convenience store, this-
Is a retail sales-
The same comment as on the other one would be on this. You indicated on the other one, it was a neighborhood market.
Oh, it's, yeah, I didn't, I was speaking, I didn't mean to be confusing in that regard. I was thinking more of the convenience store industry in terms of how they raise the bar there. This is the same product that we went over previously across the board. Thanks.
Okay. It's a step up. Quite a big step up. Any comments from the board? I did just want to say, I think it's, I agree with actually what you said, Mr. Sullivan. Racetrack is number 36 on the Forbes list of top private companies. And you're an incredibly impressive company, you're an incredibly impressive company in terms of employee, how you deal with your employees, what your employees think of you. You're a nine and a half billion dollar company last year in sales. So, yeah, I don't think you would lightly just buy property without knowing what your market is. Anyway, board, a motion? Comments? We need a motion or comment?
My only comment is, you know, I'm always unhappy with PCDs. But since we seem to be locked into in this particular location, I guess I'll have to tell myself I am not that unhappy.
Make a motion that DEV 2013-034, Racetrack, LPGA, PCD, be accepted.
With-
With staff conditions.
Staff conditions.
With staff conditions, of course.
And the racetrack agreement to work on the trees, the trees. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, like so? Okay, unanimous, thank you. All right, you know our next item of business.
Okay. Yeah. Item number seven, other business. Downtown Blue Road Redevelopment Area Board. I was unable to attend the meeting on the 7th. I had surgery that day, but I did stay in touch to find out what was going on and the item we had earlier today, the DEV 2013-051 regarding the zoning map amendment for Michigan Avenue residents, that was approved. That was a big discussion at that meeting.
Done. All right, Midtown?
Nope, she's not here.
Ms. Benjamin's not here. Main Street, Mr. Bohan's not here. Public comment?
Wow.
Mr. Nicholson, I believe, is going to get up again?
Good to see you.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. It's been three months. You know, the Land Development Code is coming down the pike and I always, we were going to talk about this nine, 10 years ago and we put it off because we were talking about the B-Trot and then this street, then that street, the floor area ratio. We had a problem with that, we were going to talk about it. It's only been 10 years and Land Development Code is really right around the corner now. Secondly, submerged land. We didn't talk about it and then Edith Charlie got really bent out of shape when it hit her neighborhood. And then somebody else hit his neighborhood. I think we really should look at submerged land now before we get bitten the butt again. Hotel parking. There are two huge developments coming in, the Russians and the Canadians. I don't have a problem with what's going to happen at the Hard Rock, but I do have a problem with the Russians because now they're not putting in their mechanical parking. They bought the Eckards across the street and will put a parking garage there. Well, I have a problem with the first four blocks of A1A north of Main Street because it's all parking. All you see is wall after wall after wall after wall. If we end up in this corner with two walls, one on Oak Ridge and one on A1A, it's going to be devastating in terms of the viability of the neighborhood. I would hope that when it comes before you, that you will ask them to put shops at least on the A1A side. It can be done with a parking garage. But I'm asking you to at least look at that before we end up biting the bullet again. And lastly, landscaping. It popped up here. A lot of our landscaping in the past is no longer there. Look at the Seabreeze and the IFB Bridge. There's all this landscaping on both sides and it's all gone. 90% of it is gone. We require people to put in this landscaping, so many bushes, so many trees, so many whatever, and then within two or three years, it's gone. It has literally gone to seed. I would rather have more dynamic landscaping that they provide, like the trees on Beach Street. You've just got trees and grass and it looks so fantastic. I'm sure we can do something where they come before us with something minimal, but dynamic, than a bunch of junk that ends up dying within a few years. Thank you.
Staff comments, or, yes, staff comments.
Another thing, I wanted to remind everyone that we're asking for a special planning board meeting. We're going to actually combine that with a public input forum on Module Three of the Land Development Code next Thursday, the 30th, at 5:00 PM in this room. Clarion Associates will be here, I spoke with them today. For those of you on the subcommittee, we're actually going to be meeting the day before at 4:30. It's like at this point, we're going to try to do it downstairs, but we're here at the last minute, we're going to have too big for that room, we'll probably have to move that up here. But right now, we're, what the purpose of that meeting will be is to, you have not discussed Land Development Code as a group and you're going to have to vote on it. It's a big document, so we want to start that off. Clarion will be here, will kind of have an overview of where we've been with this and generally the document and any of that has comments, we certainly are going to take them. In fact, that's the purpose of the public forum. The document's been out there for several months. Clarion's scope of services and contracts is that when they leave, they're supposed to be making final changes. We will be doing testing as well, but there will be a final document release for a public hearing that will come to you for a full public hearing. Right now, we're hoping that will be at probably a special meeting. I think we would suggest a special meeting for Land Development Code rather than a regular meeting, that will be in September. Wanting to get that done by the end of the year. So that's a schedule we have put out and I would like to see you all on the 30th and the advisory board people, obviously, on the 29th.
Okay. Board members, starting with Mr. Bogman, any comments?
No further comments.
Okay.
I have none.
All right. Okay, we are adjourned.